Okay, I have seven o'clock. I'd like to bring the Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. Casey, if you could take roll call, please.
Carolyn Turner?
Here.
Rob Klein?
Here.
Jim Callahan?
Yep.
Bob Darty? Dave Edmonds?
Here.
Claudia Bulgan, here. Claudia Bulgan and Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Excellent. I forget myself sometimes. I'd like to, before the meeting begins, please silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is a subdivision approval not required, 38 Middle Street and 0 Freiburg Road. Mr. Director.
Okay. Everybody has a copy of this plan in front of them and it's included in the staff report. It's a rather simple plan. Parcel A, consisting of 475 square feet. Parcel A is being transferred to lot 1B. It has frontage on Freiburg Road, which is a private way. And the frontage on Middle Street, lot 1A, that remains the same. Both lots, as you can see, meet the minimum lot size requirement, 12,000 square feet, and they do meet the minimum frontage requirement of 100 feet. Anybody has any questions? I would recommend endorsement of the plan.
Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain motion if there's no question.
I'll make a motion to endorse the plan, approval not required.
Motion to adopt the plan by Claudia, second by Jim. All those in favor? Seven for, zero against. Okay, up next on the public hearings, zoning text amendment to amend the 1985 Woburn zoning ordinance by revising Section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations by deleting P and inserting X so that the municipal uses are permitted as of right in all zoning districts. Mr. Director.
Yes, I just want to bring to board member attention, I did send out an email subsequent to everyone receiving the agenda in the meeting materials on Friday. So on Monday, I sent out an addendum to the materials that were sent out earlier. And just to bring to light, the last time this particular issue was dealt with by this planning board, it was back in 1992. And at that time, the city changed from by right municipal uses in all zoning districts to special permit. So that's when the change last occurred to the zoning amendment or the zoning ordinance in regard to municipal uses. And as I explained in the staff report for this evening's meeting or public hearing, that the city does have planned a number of municipal uses. And the city officials that have presented this, the mayor and the city council president, and I believe a number of other city councillors, believe it will be to the city's advantage going forward with these projects if they're allowed by right as opposed to requiring, as I described in the staff report, a discretionary special permit. I further described in the staff report that mass law allows for uses that would be typically considered uses that would be allowed in a zoning district, that they not require a special permit. And I put a number of examples for the board to consider. And for instance, a single-family house in a single-family zoning district would be a typical use and that would be allowed by right, along with industrial uses in industrial park zone. It would be typically allowed by right under site plan review. And the same with office buildings and office park zones. Those are uses that are typically considered by right uses. Most communities require site plan review for those type of uses, but they don't require special permits. With public uses, as I described again in the staff report, public uses, municipalities just don't build schools where they're not needed, build them where they're needed, fire stations where they're needed, pumping stations, DPW facilities. And all of these public uses, municipal uses, are what most would consider essential. You know, cities, municipalities don't build municipal buildings for just building sake. They build them for a public purpose. And in this particular case, you know, drawing that analogy, the city may want to consider allowing such uses by right and not requiring, you know, the discretionary special permit. Because these uses along the lines of essential public uses, they're uses that would typically be considered by right type of uses. So that's the argument that I presented in the staff report. I'm hoping for any opposing opinions, but, you know, that's what I considered relevant argument for the purposes of this presentation.
Anybody on the board like to comment at this moment? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening to the members of the board and staff. John just did a great job summarizing a lot of what I was going to say. This did emanate as a result of some discussions we've been having on projects in the city, most notably the acquisition and renovation to a degree of 6 Common Street Next Door for additional workspace at City Hall, the annex for City Hall. There is an active building use subcommittee ongoing. Some of this discussion came from that subcommittee. And also, there's a fire station building committee to discuss and determine the next steps on rebuilding two new fire stations and renovating the South End Fire Station. So in the context of those two committees, there were many discussions about ways to streamline the process, move these projects along as expeditiously as possible. And one of the things that came up was the notion of the municipal use exemption. Just one more way to perhaps move these things along a little quicker and to John's point to perhaps reduce or eliminate the discretionary nature of approval. In those meetings, we talked with, obviously, Director Cashell, Commissioner Tom Quinn from Building, and City Solicitor Mark Salvati, all members of these two committees. And I was given a bit of a history on the 30-plus years ago when this changed, but it seemed like a relevant time to at least bring the discussion up again. President Dillon was kind enough to file this on my behalf at the council, and obviously the first step is to come here to the planning board and get your thoughts on this. To John's point, we're talking the analogy of uses that would typically be allowed by right in a zone should not require a special permit. And we're talking about municipal use projects, schools, fire departments, city hall annex, water treatment plants, and the like. These are necessary municipal projects and buildings and uses. And I think the idea is that there will be and there has been ample opportunity, when any of these projects come up, for the public to weigh in. As we're doing now and have historically, we have subcommittees or committees where members of the public can attend. These are posted public meetings. Members of the public can come, they can weigh in, they can offer their suggestions, their concerns. So there is that notice, as well as the right to be heard, that I think should hopefully calm some of the fears if we were to make a move such as this. So at this point, I know that Commissioner Quinn is here. City Solicitor Salvati is unable to be here, but he's available to this board subsequent to this meeting for any further discussion or clarification or any opinion that you might be interested in. But we're simply seeking the planning board's consideration of this zoning text amendment. Would be interested in hearing your thoughts, any questions, any concerns. But before I ask for any questions, I would just ask Commissioner Quinn to come up and offer his thoughts on this, please.
Please.
Good evening, Tom Quinn, Building Commissioner, City of Woburn. Director Cashell did a great job speaking his thoughts on this. The mayor did a fantastic job on his, and I share both of those gentlemen's thoughts on this process. Being the zoning enforcement officer and the building commissioner, single-family homes are allowed in a single-family zone, office buildings are allowed in an office park zone, and there aren't too many restrictions, provided they meet the criteria of the code and the dimensional controls. For municipal use, buildings that, again, as Director Cashell said, we don't build them for fun, we build them for use for the citizens and their public service buildings. And to have a restriction or another process of a special permit, it just belabors the process. You know, during discussions, some have weighed in that the city and the elected officials may lose control, but they still have the funding mechanism that they would have to approve all of these projects for the taxpayers. So we're just trying to streamline these processes and make it a little simpler and easier for the community in a whole. You know, with further discussions with Solicitor Salvati, who couldn't be here tonight, we did some research on different municipalities and currently, other towns that don't require them are Bill Ricker, Wolfham, Lexington, Somerville, allowed by right in all zoning districts for municipal use. Arlington, Burlington, Medford, all zones by right, except police and fire require special permits in residential zones. And if you look at the makeup of those communities, they do have a lot of residential neighborhoods and they're not as diverse as, you know, mixed uses within Woburn. They are to a point, but Woburn's a little unique based on the topography and the budding towns that we butt. Winchester, allowed by right except residential zones. Again, Winchester is a heavily residential town with very little commercial base. And then Stonham, a neighbor to the east, does not address it at all. So that would tell us that, you know, if it gets approved through, in Stonham's case, town meeting and through the town manager's office, it would be a by right project. But it's just, again, we're trying to simplify a process that has been in play for many, many years. And more importantly, it's additional burden on the city engineer, the building commissioner, the planning department, and all of the staff to prepare all of these working documents for a special permit that, you know, their needed uses. And I'll leave it at that because, again, Director Cashell and the mayor, they said pretty much what I was going to say, so I have nothing else. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Good. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. You're welcome. I don't know if you have any questions at me at this time.
Any questions? Jim?
What's your thoughts for the ordinance change for dealing with residential areas?
The request is by right in all zones, but as Tom said, clearly, there are some other communities that have sought to put that restriction in the residential. Again, I would be happy to hear your suggestions, concerns, and obviously, when I went to the council, they would have the opportunity to weigh in as well. If they felt it necessary to include that type of restrictive language, so be it. I understand how the process works.
I understand. I'm just bringing it up for discussion for the people that are at home currently. Most of the fire stations that are now closed and going to be replaced or whatever, all reside in a residential area.
Yeah. Just to add to that, Jim, the plans for the rebuilding of Station 4 are on the exact same footprint. Station 5, we are in the process of identifying a new location because the current lot just cannot hold what we need there. So I guess there's a possibility that could end up in a residential neighborhood. It's not our preference. Again, I go back to the notion of the fire station building committee that's ongoing and will continue until the end of the projects. Right now, they're biweekly meetings, they'll be as needed, always open to the public, always available for members of the public to come in and comment, raise a concern, bring it to our attention, just as they would at a public hearing during a special permit process. So I think the opportunity to be notified and to be heard does exist to calm those fears, and any of those concerns would be taken into consideration.
One other question is, generally, with the fire stations and the emergency vehicles, it's the sirens, right?
Yep.
Would the public have an opportunity to address those, put any type of restrictions, or put in traffic signals so that, you know, the emergency vehicles can get in and out freely, similar to what they did at the new fire station?
Yeah, I think that the traffic signal issue is always a consideration when we're putting in a fire station. You know, in terms of restricting the use of the sirens, I don't know that we've ever gone quite that far, but certainly, the traffic signals are part of the idea, part of the project scope.
Claudia. Okay. John?
Yeah. I also want to point out, over the last few months, we've really looked at the city of Woburn, and everybody has to take into consideration, we're not talking 50, 60 years ago, where there was an abundance of land, you know, that we could pick and choose where we would want to put these municipal uses. So it's very restricted at this point in time, and it's not a situation where we're talking about putting a satellite police station. That's not even on the radar for anybody. As far as fire stations are concerned, as the mayor pointed out, the new fire station that's planned for East Woburn would be on the exact same site. Because there's really no other place you can put one strategically in that location that would make it feasible for the city to do. And then, as far as the West Side is concerned, it's almost as limiting in trying to locate a proper fire station, a new fire station location. It's as hard as finding a needle in a haystack, you know, the proper site. So that's really the only building we're thinking about that doesn't have a place for, yet, determined. But as far as pumping stations are concerned, you know, water pumping stations, sewer pumping stations, pretty much all of those facilities are well-mapped out, located sufficiently, distributed throughout the city. And there are no real new locations of those type of facilities. And the same goes with schools. You know, any new schools rehabilitation of existing schools, that's going to take place pretty much from here on out on existing sites. You know, it may possibly be one, 10, or 15, 20 years, depending on what happens with multifamily development in the northeast section of the city. Who knows if, you know, a school might be called for closer to that location within the city. But what I'm really getting at is, you know, this particular ordinance change isn't for a multitude of municipal uses that are being planned. It's to help facilitate that rare occasion that we're going to have to find a new location. And it's one of the hardest things to do is to locate one of these facilities within the city, because the space is so limited. Pretty much everything's been built out and...
And to follow up on that, John, the goal is to locate the new Station 5 somewhere really close to the four corners, in the commercial area. We're not seeking to put it in a residential neighborhood. We're working on two locations right now that would not be residential. And if either of those two can happen, that'll be the end of it, we'll put it there. Only if we had to keep looking would we consider more residential. And again, this all came up as one of a series of questions and topics to move the process along. I don't want to overemphasize what we're asking for here. It's not, you know, all or nothing kind of situation. We just thought that since it had been so long, since this discussion had come up in Woburn, and we had these two committees operating at the same time, and we were trying to advance them quickly, perhaps we'd bring it up and get the input of this body as well as the
Any questions? Claudia?
I've been sitting here a long time, Mr. Mayor, and I really do not recall a project that came to our attention or to my attention that used this ordinance. And I'm trying to, John, can you help me? Like, when was the last time a municipal use came in for a special permit? I'm just trying to think back how often this has happened in the 30-something years since the ordinance change came to pass.
If you look, Claudia, again, Tom Quinn, if you look at Section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations for the line item for municipal use, it's a special permit it used through the city council in all zoning districts. There's no other footnotes there, no other requirements for the planning board to act on that, because it's all a city council permit.
Okay.
And just as an example, if you look at light manufacturing in 5.1 for over 15,000, you'll see a PB for Planning Board Special Permit, whereas your group, the planning board, would be the special permit granting authority and not the city council.
Understood.
So I hope that gives you a little clarity on why you haven't seen them at the planning board level.
That makes a lot of sense. Do you have a sense as to how often in the time that we're talking about, this has come to pass in front of the city council?
Well, again, I've been in this, working for the city for 38 years, but I've been in this building for 20 years. The only one who may have better history than me is Director Cashell, who has a little more tenure. But we did have the Horn Pond Water Treatment Plant. The addition to the Horn Pond Water Treatment Plant in the accessory building at the plant, at the pond. Police station was many, many years ago. 1997, we had the Public Works Facility, which was rebuilt on the same exact spot. It's, you know, the special permit process was there then. And what's come to light, as the mayor had said, is we have a lot of great projects at the same time. And sitting on the reuse committee for the Next Door and the Fire Station Building Committee, we were throwing these ideas around to move these projects along. Again, keeping in mind that the city council controls the funding mechanism, but, you know, one of the things that we don't want to do is if there's borrowing, we don't want to lose our great rates on our AAA bond rating for delays for going through another process.
Understood.
You know, that's how I would look at it, too.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Now I sort of get the scope since this came into the zoning 30-something years ago. Awesome. Thank you very much.
One more thing, too. It just keeps in mind with pricing, too. I mean, today's pricing might be better than next week's pricing. So on these things, too, it's to save time for the taxpayers, and at the end result, save the city some money, too, for monetary purposes.
Understood. Thank you so much. Super helpful. Thank you, I'm all set.
All set.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I was able to jog my memory by reviewing the minutes of the meetings back then when we did have this as a public hearing topic. And as I recall, a lot of it had to do with proper landscaping of municipal uses. At that point in time, the planning board was involved with a lot of landscaping issues and, you know, properties being properly landscaped. Prior to 92, there really wasn't that much attention brought to landscaping for projects, exterior lighting, the proper lighting thereof of these uses. So that's really what was behind the reason for making that change at that point in time. Today, those issues are really standard. Facilities being built always have a landscape plan as part of them. You know, the exterior lighting plans are important insofar as making sure that you're not casting light into the sky or having light trespass from the property that's supposed to be lighted at night. So those were the real two main reasons. You do have, with fire stations, you know, noise that would otherwise not be so prevalent in a neighborhood. But, you know, it's rare that a city actually builds fire stations. I know this city just built a magnificent fire station that's always wanted, and I think the location is really superior to anywhere else they could have put one. But these other two stations are in dire need of replacement at this point in time. And the city would like to be able to be in an opportunity or to present an opportunity for itself to build both at the same time, if at all possible. And again, by right would help facilitate that happening as opposed to a special permit.
Okay.
John, I have a quick question for you. Back then, when this was originally done, was the planning board part of the special permit process?
Back at that point in time, the board was involved with site plan review. And when site plan review first came into vogue as a planning tool, and Mr. Tobi will remember this, we treated it as a special permit, per se, site plan review. Subsequent to that era, or just in that period of time, late 80s, early 90s, there were some court cases decided that rendered site plan review to be very limited. Planning boards conduct site plan reviews all the time in Massachusetts, but site plans are accepted now relative to case law as not a permit, they're site plan review, and they're not subject to denial. They're subject to reasonable conditions being imposed, typical conditions that would be imposed having to do with driveways, parking requirements, exterior lighting, travel lanes within the site, you know. And if it's a large site plan review project, you can get into off-site traffic improvements. But, you know, you're working with the proponent, and it's not a discretionary special permit, okay? You know, site plans are reserved for large uses that are typically allowed by right in a zoning district. Special permits are not typically, or could be considered not typically allowed in a zoning district. Therefore, there's a special permit which allows for the discretion of denial. Site plan review does not allow for that discretion.
Thank you, John. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody in the public that would like to come up and speak on this subject in favor or against? Let me see, nobody. Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Dave, second by Claudia. All those in favor? Seven for, not against. I myself have a general question here. So basically, what we're going to be, what we're looking to have us pass on to the city council and say we agree with it is that municipal use throughout the city would be allowed, throughout the city. So not that it's going to happen, but if they wanted to put a fire station on Valley Road, and there was a piece of land on Valley Road that they could do it, they could do it without getting a special permit.
That would be the case.
So, Mr. Mayor, you had said that the residents would have plenty of opportunity to speak one way or for or against something like that?
Yes.
And from what I'm gathering is the only way that, say, I didn't want it built on Valley Road, would be to get a certain amount of councillors to not vote for the money to build the fire station.
I think that's probably one way, but the other way would be to come to a fire station building, building committee, raise your legitimate, rational, logical, convincing concerns, and perhaps cause that fire station building committee to revisit where they plan to locate that fire station.
Okay. And the way it's set up now is that I could actually go to a council meeting and explain the whole thing again and hope that the council does not grant the special permit.
Right. But you couldn't control the process. You could simply voice your concerns to that body as opposed to the fire station building committee body.
Okay. And my other question is, other than the special permit process, and probably filling out a little extra paperwork, obviously, to apply for a special permit, and then going before the city council to get the special permit, that's, that's really all we're eliminating here, is that process.
Yeah, I would let Tom Quinn and the other department heads weigh in to explain exactly what's involved in the preparation and the gather of documents and the timing involved in preparing for those public hearings. But essentially, as I said earlier, I don't want to overstate what we're asking for. I'm not trying to make it sound like the only way we can go forward and build fire stations is with this amendment. I don't mean that at all. We'll, we're going to do it one way or the other.
Yeah, no, I.
This just takes out a couple of those variables that could just become obstacles.
I, I agree with you. I mean, I, I heard a couple of things from a couple of other towns that were pretty interesting, you know, that, that may be factored in. And I, I don't know about anybody else on the board, but I think this takes a little more thinking about rather than just approving it tonight. But that's just me. And anybody else like to speak on this? Public hearings closed. Public hearings closed?
Well, I'd like to speak, sir.
Yeah, but the public hearing, we, this was a public hearing, and we just closed the public hearing.
Second, right?
Excuse me?
As I.
No, no, probably five minutes ago.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not to, all due respect, I can't recall. Did we actually vote to close the public hearing? Was, there was a motion. Was it seconded?
It was a motion by Dave, seconded by Claudia, and then seven to zero passed.
All right. That flew by me. I must have been lost in my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, I could reconsider my second.
Okay.
If the, it was the will of the board. When we called for the public and perhaps it wasn't clear, I'd be happy to hear public input. So I could certainly reconsider my second if there was the will of the board to, you know, walk that back and, and allow the public to speak.
Which, which is fine. I don't want to deny the public an opportunity to speak. It was just kind of relaying the way it kind of works.
Indeed.
But if you'd like to withdraw your second, I'll allow you to do that.
Okay, so let us, if, if I could do that, and then the motion maker can decide whether or not they wish to withdraw the motion, and then we could vote on that, I would assume. Does that make sense?
That is how it works, yes.
Okay.
So, and you withdraw your motion? Okay. All those in favor allowing us to withdraw this motion, please raise their hands and understand what they're voting for. Seven, zero passes. So now the public hearing is back open.
Back open.
So if you would like to speak, please step right up. Give us your name, and I don't know if there's a book down there, but if there isn't, just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm, I live at Seven Churchill Road in Woburn. My only concern, my only question is, was the, is, can the public still contribute to conversations with any of this? And do they have any input as to whether a project goes forward or not?
I.
Such as?
Well, I, that's kind of the same question I had asked the mayor myself, and it wouldn't be to deny, I don't know, can anybody answer that better?
So, yes, it will be, as explained by the mayor, there will be an avenue for public input so that if a butter or butters had concerns, certain concerns, whether it be lighting, you know, the way the building situated, if it could be moved away from a residence, you know, if, if things could happen, and still allow the project go forward. But the public will have an opportunity to provide input for their concerns, any questions they may have. You know, possibly impose reasonable conditions that make sense to make the project better. That, that would be an allowed avenue for concerned residents, butters. I don't think any, this city's not going to take that away. Ultimately, this proposal, it, it's realistically being proposed because it becomes less costly for the city to have to go through preparing special permit plans, site plans, as opposed to going right to a building permit.
Yes, I understand.
Application. But that building permit application would be preceded by public input opportunities. Everything that this city does, it, it allows for the public to have input. And we have public hearings all the time for projects, things that we're planning for that aren't required to have public hearings, but we want to be completely transparent and open with everything publicly being done that this city controls. And, you know, basically, it's your taxes paying for government operations here, you know, and, you know, you hear from people, you know, I pay your salary, you know, I, you know, I get, I can get mad at you because I pay taxes here. And, you know, we take that seriously. You know, I don't know anybody in City Hall that doesn't want to cooperate with the general public and, and their concerns. I mean, I, I think we have a pretty stable community insofar as feeling comfortable being able to come here and talk to people they need to talk to so that they can do their life chores, you know, what they want to do with their lives and how that is associated with local government. So.
Thank you, John.
Barbara, and you know what? I think it'd be a fool not to listen to you if you have a concern. That's what I would, I would say to myself.
That was my point, whether, whether the public not only had input, but would it weigh one way or another. You know, I, I don't want to see a gas station put, you know, three hundred feet from a residential house in a residential area. That, so, you know, your public would probably come and say, you know, we don't want that.
That, that's not a municipal use, though.
No.
That we're not talking about.
So it's only, only municipal uses?
Municipal uses, yes.
Buildings?
Yep.
Like a school or something?
A school, a fire station, a police station, you know, something along those lines. But a gas station wouldn't fall into this category at all.
I see. Okay. So that was the whole thing. There wasn't enough in the paper to distinguish all that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? So I'm looking at the zoning code, and there is a definition of municipal use. So that's helpful. And it says it is, "Land or structures shall include, but not be limited to, public administrative buildings, police and fire stations, public maintenance facilities, sewer and water stations, public utilities, roadways, easements, and conservation lands." So those aren't exclusive, but that's kind of the idea of municipal uses that's being talked about as per our zoning code. So I just wanted to, if, if that was helpful, put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Yes, Carol?
And just another follow-up comment. I think that when you look at it and maybe to the public eye, they see a municipal use is permitted as a matter of right in all zoning different, all zoning districts. Again, it's, it's a municipal use that is going to go forward, and two things out of that that were mentioned tonight, one by Mr. Quinn. It's going to be in an effort to help taxes, and it's going to be to the benefit of the city, number one. And number two, if they're going to put this municipal use project in a residential district, I can't imagine anybody in the city of Woburn would want to do that, whether it's Mr. Quinn, the mayor. It's going to be there for the benefit of the residents. So I, I think that's an important distinction, distinction when you look at municipal use definitions. So that's why I think it would be beneficial, if that helps.
Okay, it's still a public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak either far or against this, please step forward. You've got two seconds. No.
Just want to elaborate on one point if I could. Historically, whenever we do any type of project, in addition to these building committees we talk about, we work closely with the city council on the funding, on the planning, on all of it. And we work closely with the, the ward counselor in that area. And I can't think of a time when we didn't have at least one or at least a series of neighborhood meetings on any one of these significant projects, which also allows more opportunity for the community at large, but also the specific neighbors to the proposed project to come and speak. And almost every occasion I can think of, the project changed at least a little bit as a result of those neighborhood meetings. Members of the fire station building committee include the city council president, and invited members on the committee include the ward counselors in Station Four's area, Station Five's area, Station One's area. So there's, I just want to allay those fears a little bit, and I understand them, that we wouldn't want this to appear like we're trying to squelch public input or giving them a chance to be heard. That, to John's point, I want to foster that. I think historically, Woburn does a good job of not allowing, but encouraging that. And, and I do pledge that close cooperation with the city council and the ward counselors of jurisdiction to be part of all of this. They have been and they'll continue to be, just to put that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, at this point, I'll take a motion on the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Dave has a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Claudia has a second on closing the public hearing. All those in favor? Seven, zero. Well, it's the same count. Okay. So on this particular subject, does anybody else on the, on the planning board have anything they'd like, like to add? Claudia?
So it strikes me that the process of seeking a special permit, when the proponent is the actual city itself, is kind of a duplicative process because if the actual proponent is the city itself, there has already, as Mr. Mayor has said, been an enormous amount of work and effort by the city to get it together, and then they're then asked to go through the same process of approval that a private applicant seeking private purposes would have to go through. And that, to me, seems a, a little bit of overkill because it is expensive to produce these plans and to have city officials show up at these meetings and so on and so forth. It takes away from things they could be doing with their time, you know, in another way. So if I, I look at this and I think, well, the process of seeking a special permit seems appropriate when the proponent is not itself the city, but it seems rather duplicative when the proponent is the city. So I am looking at this, and I, I don't see a problem, and, and I would support it for that reason, that there's not much more, I think, a different public forum than the already very public forum that is necessary to bring a building project forward can, can really give the city. And then there's a cost of taxes paid for all of the things that a private proponent going through the special permit process would have to do, and then the city would also have to do. So, so that's the way I look at it, and I just thought I'd put that out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Rob. Just, I'm just throwing out there, my preference would probably be to, to limit the residential zonings. I just think, you know, as much as the city wouldn't want it in a residential zone, I think that just adds an extra layer to, you know, sway them from looking in residential zones. So that's, I'm just throwing out my, my opinion. I don't have a problem with the rest of it, but residential zoning, to me, seems like there should still be a special permit involved with, vote from the city council and the constituents in that ward, you know, who voted that, city counselor can speak with them, so.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Jim?
Yeah, during the design review process with the architects and engineers, they're going to bring in their conceptual drawings and all their backup to support their decision-making, and they're going to have to bring it to the building committee, present it, and it's typically done in three phases on Public Works, thirty, sixty, and hundred percent drawings. At those points, the public would be able to review those documents at those same meetings and weigh in for their comments and consideration. Ultimately, the building committee would have the ultimate decision-making process that goes forward. And it does not, they do not have a voice directly on the cost onits of a development. But I think most of the concerns I think I'm hearing tonight, which on my side also, is that the city doesn't get excluded, the residents don't get excluded from the process. I think that if they want to be involved in a project review, they have to participate like any other activity down here. But that's typically how a public job would go out, when their development is from scratch, the concept, thirty percent complete drawings, sixty and hundred. And those are the intervals where the public would be able to weigh in, and the planning board review for whichever building structure they're going to build would then bring it to committee, to the board for their final approval and funding, but that's all.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Mr. Director?
Yep.
What, I see your recommendation down here to.
Yep.
Just read it for everybody in case they have to.
Yeah, and I just want to also, before I suggest what the, what the, what I would suggest the board to do, I think we've had a really good debate deliberation this evening. You know, we haven't spent days on this or hours, but I think we all get it. You know, and Claudia, I don't think anybody could have said it nice, more, nice, nicer than she did, but also recognizing that it is an onerous exercise for municipal uses that, again, are typically uses that are necessary to perform government functions, to provide government functions for all of the residents and business people. The city is not in the, in the business of building high-rise office buildings and stuff of that nature. We're only building stuff that the citizens of Woburn need, the businesses of Woburn need, whether it's roadway improvements, schools being built, fire stations, police stations, public utilities being installed. So to require a special permit for those type of uses that are absolutely essential for government function to proper, properly function, what did you say, duplicative?
Duplicative.
Duplicative, yes, duplicative. And I think that says it all. We, we really don't have to go the extra mile of requiring special permits when there is another avenue, and that is a by right application process.
So your recommendation?
My recommendation is, and I did write it here, for municipal use. My recommendation is, and I did write it here, for municipal uses to be considered as of right in all zoning districts, subject only to the issuance of a building permit and if applicable, also subject to ZBA dimensional variances. So if, if a building does not meet a setback requirement, that municipal use would have to go before the ZBA for dimensional relief.
So your recommendation is send a favorable recommendation to the city council?
That's correct.
With that one caveat?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion from anybody on the board?
I'd make a motion to adopt the planning board director's recommendation.
Okay. By Claudia to adopt the director's recommendation. Do I have a second? Jim, a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seven zero carries. Thank you. Okay, up next, we've got definitive subdivisions. First one, Twenty-Fourth Flag Street, request for extension of construction completion date.
Hey, for the record, George Gately Jr., I am underway over there. I don't know if anybody's driven by, but I do have one house being roughed in now and it's all being sited and so I'm underway, but I am asking for a year extension to stop my second one and complete the road.
What is, do we know what the current?
Yeah, can I, can I just say, I did, I did visit the site this past week and the road up, is up to binder grid. They are building one of the houses at the end and there's one remaining. It's a two-lot subdivision. George, when do you plan on completing the project in its entirety this, this coming year?
About five years ago.
Five years ago.
Ah, so yeah, I'd look for another year. Yeah, please.
I was very surprised after twenty-three years of absence to actually see something going on at the end of Flag Street.
It was a great improvement, believe me.
Yeah.
I did a good thing for the neighborhood.
And it was probably a miracle in such a, a project being approved, in my humble opinion.
It was good for the city. They should have approved it.
Yeah, anyway.
So when, when is the current completion date? When, when is that?
I think it was November fifteenth, to tell you the truth, it's passed.
Okay.
November eighteenth, November fifteenth.
Well, notice five passes a lot of people, so we got that going for you. Uh, Jim?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension of one year to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Jim to extend the completion date to November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a second on that? Second by Kevin. All those in favor?
Can we have just a discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I should have.
George, I remember this. It was a good thing.
Yes.
Given your workload, are we going to see another extension a year from now or do you think you can?
No.
Get bang that second house out?
I'll get it done, yeah.
All right, awesome. Thank you. All right, I'm all set.
All those in favor? Opposed? Six in favor, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Up next is Cliffside Terrace, view status of subdivision approval.
So, good evening, Attorney Joseph Tavi, Woburn and Redmond, 500 Unicorn Park Drive, on behalf of the, the applicant. Not looking for any approval this evening, just want to give you an update. And I never had a chance to talk to John before the agenda got published, but back in September, we submitted to the city solicitor a covenant, drainage, and landscape easement and a homeowners association, which he reviewed and commented that everything was in order. So what I've done is I've updated the documents, because they hadn't been executed yet, updated the documents to reflect the December date and will be circulating among my clients, one who lives in New York at the end of this week. And we'll have signatures. Once I have the signatures, I'll let, I'll provide John with a copy of the signatures and we can pick up the original Mylar and record everything at the registry of deeds. Just to refresh your memory, this was approved June of, of this year and completion date is not till twenty twenty-six. Well, that, that's the update.
Any comments or questions for Attorney Tavi?
No, just that, a lot of paperwork and it does take time to execute it. So he's been working on it and should be ready to go with our.
Yep, I finished, you know, updating everything today and I will circulate it tomorrow to the client.
Joe, do you want to comment on the new state statute having to do with?
Yes, yeah.
Extentions to completion dates? I really, I had a brief talk with Joe right before this meeting and he brought to my attention that the state has approved and adopted a new law that extends projects within a specific set of dates. And they've been extended for another two years?
Correct, yeah, no, on November tw- I think it was November twentieth, Governor Healey signed the law, which was called the Mass Leeds Law, and chapter two eighty of that act provided a permit extension section so that any permit that was valid between January first of twenty twenty-three up to January first of twenty twenty-five, including permits under chapter forty-one, which the planning board would be issuing, is, they're automatically extended for another two-year period. So, you know, Mr. Gately's subdivision technically is extended for, you know, two years, although he just requested the one year. So that, that's, the act, the law's about three hundred and ninety-four pages long, but chapter two eighty is only like three pages long. I did provide John with a copy of that, that he could circulate to the board if he'd like.
So that, that's two years from the existing construction completion date?
Correct.
So if somebody's not even before us and their completion date isn't for another six months?
Yeah.
At that point, they really don't even have to come before us technically to get it extended? Because it's automatically extended?
Yeah, I'd say technically and, you know, maybe you want to have the city solicitor take a look at it and, you know, confirm that.
Makes things easier, I guess. Okay.
You never know what's going to come out of the state house.
No, you know, no, not these days. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Through the chair to John. Joe, thanks for letting us know. And should we just implement some sort of administrative process so that someone like Mr. Gately wouldn't have to come in if indeed, by right, by law, he had this time? Do you see my point?
Yeah.
Like, under the circumstances, it makes sense, I think, to give our applicants and our petitioners the benefit of the law. And whatever process we as a planning board think needs to happen, maybe what Joe suggested is someone comes in, hey, I've got a, I've got a subdivision that's technically expiring, I'm claiming the benefit of this law, you know, am I good? And then through the planning board staff office, you would work, work that. Do you see my point? So that it didn't have to come to someone coming to our meeting, but, you know, the planning board may have a different, you know, view on that.
So I'm thinking along the lines that we know of the statute now. It's, it's a new statute.
Mm-hmm.
It does affect a number of subdivisions that have been ongoing in the city, not a lot of them, but, you know, there's, there are a few. And if, I'll throw this out, I could put in each one of those particular files, notice of this new law and anybody looking in that file will recognize that that particular project is valid to continue progressing up until determination of this particular law. You know, and I'm envisioning that this law may be extended, you know, depending on the state of the economy going forward, that nobody has figured out yet, but, or another virus coming by, I doubt that'll happen, but, but that's really the, the catalyst behind this, this law being passed. All of these projects were so severely disrupted with COVID, you know, and then trying to get past COVID and get projects up and running again, there's such an immense construction delay and all of that. So it, to me, it, it's the state recognizing the absolute need for this extension provision to be passed. And, you know, it's the state government listening to the private sector and saying, hey, we're on, you know, we're under a tremendous amount of pressure, no fault of our, of our own, trying to complete these projects, because it's not only just the COVID, you know, the bottleneck of products, you know? Just for instance, how many developers have not been able to get their, help me out with this one, the transformers? You know, there, there's a backlog of transformers that, that, you know, a couple of years ago, they were projecting like two and three-year delays to get these products to site. I think that has been reduced quite a bit and improved upon, but, you know, all those delays really have killed a lot of projects or really hampered them.
Through the chair to John.
Yes.
It would be useful to see the text of the law?
Yeah.
Because whatever we as a planning board would think about requiring applicants in this position to do may be circumscribed by what the law says. Like, we may not be able to require them to come in or to file anything or things of this nature, depending on what the law says. So it may make sense to circulate the law and then, you know, as a planning board, we think about, well, how we can sort of keep our hands around these subdivisions that are affected by it. But without seeing it tonight, I can't say what we can or can't legally require of these applicants under those circumstances.
So I'll do some homework and I'll put that on our January agenda.
Great, excellent, thank you.
Jim?
We have the city solicitor review this and weigh in on it and when. A lot of these applications have already had two and three extensions prior to COVID, okay? And now they're on their fourth and fifth, which I don't think is the intent of this law change. But nevertheless, whatever the state ways, be the right way to go, we follow it. Follow Mr. Solvati's direction.
Colonel?
And just as a follow-up to that, if we are allowed as a right to have them come in again, from what I'm hearing is the statute is or does serve as an automatic extension. And if that's the case, that's fine, but to the extent the completion date may be within whatever the timeframe is, three or six months, perhaps we could ask them to come in just to get an update in timelines?
Yes.
Because I, I know with a lot of the projects, we've consistently asked for timelines from the applicants and I think that would be helpful, so we don't lose control and say, okay, everybody's got two years and then to John's point, if it's extended again, we're out. At least we can have updates from the developers.
I agree. Okay, thank you. Up next, Forty-three Pool Street slash Winter Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street, here in Woburn, on behalf of the applicant, Forty-three Pool Street LLC. With me here tonight is Ed Josepian, who is the manager of the LLC and developer as well. He can certainly answer any questions that the board does have tonight with regards to the construction schedule. But if you remember correctly, roughly about a year ago, we came in for the subdivision approval for Forty-three Pool Street, which was also Winter Road Extension, which ended up going through the back of Winter Road. We, since that time has passed and we got our approvals, all the covenants and restrictions, HOA fee has been recorded, supplied to the then director at the time, Tina Cassidy. And actually, I think John was just coming on at that point in time, but it was a segue into it. But since then, the drainage, water sewer, binder coat of the roadway has all been put in place. We did supply tonight with a, or last week, a as-built plan from Mr. Russell, showing what is currently on site. At this point, we're ready for construction. We're ready to pull building permits for the single-family residences. If you do recall, it was approved as a four-lot subdivision. The existing home on Pool Street was existing, it remains existing, so we are going to be pulling building permits for the three new houses that are on Winter Road Extension. So we're here tonight, obviously, to secure an amount for the surety and to ask for release of all the lots from the covenants that were recorded previously. We did supply a cost breakdown for completion. J. Corey has reviewed it, weighed in. I believe he submitted to the director a memorandum. Our amounts are pretty similar, they're very close. We are okay with the recommendation of J. Corey. And at this point, obviously, we're looking for the planning board to accept the engineer's recommendation as supplied with a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar surety and release of all the lots here tonight. So that being said, we will certainly answer any questions that the board does have.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. John, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I just wanted to make comment. I put Jay's handsome little face there.
I saw that.
Just thought I'd make a.
In case we forgot what he looked like, yeah.
So the roadway construction cost estimate is also included in the staff report. And for tonight's meeting, I included a completed covenant release form that's accurate as far as book and page numbers are concerned for the recording of the covenant. And it does cite all four lots that would be released from the terms of the covenant. And the board so chooses this evening. I do have a draft motion to the effect of establishing a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar surety in the amount recommended by the city engineer. And that same draft motion includes the release of the lots from the terms of the covenant. And if the board moves with that or takes action on that motion, that Form F would be signed by the chairman and notarized. I was hoping that, buddy, do you have your notary stamp?
Always with me.
Great. So we could wrap this up. The only caveat is that the building permits will not be issued until such time as the city is in receipt of the surety. And they are planning to put that in the form of a bond, correct?
Correct. Hopefully this week.
All right.
So do I have a, a motion?
Yeah.
Or any questions? Yes, I see your recommendation here, John.
Yeah.
You actually drafted a motion.
You know, can I bring that subject matter up? I, I used to do that years ago. I don't know if you don't want me to do it too presumptuous.
No, well, you, you, your draft motion is based on your recommendation.
Right, right.
So if we didn't want your recommendation, then we would just not vote for your draft motion.
Sounds very logical.
But in most cases, we're good.
Yeah.
We're good with you, so. But I still do need a motion from somebody, anybody, to, to do this. From the left side, maybe, anybody on the left side?
I'll make the motion to follow the director's recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Second up. Who's that?
That was Steve.
Okay. Second by Rob. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seven zero carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
I feel a little ice coming from the right side of the.
No.
Okay.
No, with a, with a draft motion, that really lets anybody?
Right.
That just wants to read the motion.
That's all.
Right?
All we'd have to do is just show up and read John's things, that's all.
Exactly.
That's how it's supposed to be. I got a lot of stories I could tell you.
No, 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 no. No, I was noticing on this meeting, in this meeting in nineteen In this meeting in 1992 here, you get done at 11:15.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I saw that.
That's why we all fall asleep, hopefully by then.
They're in bed by 11:15. All right, up next, uh, we have a continuation of discussion on the procedural rules governing the planning board. And this is something that Claudia and Carolyn have been working on diligently, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
And, uh, do you guys would like to update us some?
Claudia, I took.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah.
So everyone can have it. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll take the liberty of starting. The, the task that, that Carolyn and I took, um, the lead on this week was to not, not to comment on all of the, um, outstanding issues in these procedural rules. Because my understanding is that, that, uh, the chair and I would sit down at some point and go through, shall we say, the minor issues or.
Yeah.
Minor, you know, smaller issues and then come up with a potential, um, resolution of all of them for the board's consideration at some later date. But the main issue in front of the board on these rules is the issue of, um, timekeeping of speakers. That was the driving force for me when I was chair last year to suggest to Tina that we needed procedural rules after the court case of Barron versus Kalenda. And so that, uh, policy issue is before the board tonight, which is, do we require each speaker in every public hearing from now, from the time the procedural rules are implemented, um, to have a time limit or not? And so what Carolyn and, and, excuse me, Carolyn and I came up with is two versions of, um, it's 4.5F of the draft procedural rules. And that just got handed out by John, thank you. So the first version is the current language, which is currently in there. And that language does not require every speaker at every public hearing to abide by a time limit. What it allows is the chair in pretty much the only situation of there being a room full of people and it being un, it being unreasonable to expect that without a time limit of either five minutes or two minutes per speaker, that everybody in the room has an opportunity to speak. And at that point, the speaker, the, the chair would announce prior to the public hearing, hey, we're implementing this 4.5F. Each speaker gets five minutes or two minutes. And if they cannot make all their points in that time allotted, then here is the procedure for their, those public commenters to provide the planning board their written comments. And so underneath F, which you can read for yourself, is my, my note that this language really does not speak to the Barron versus Kalenda issue because it doesn't give any guidance to the chair in any other circumstance other than perhaps a public hearing with lots and lots of folks that the chair has implemented the, uh, time standard. How to stop a speaker from speaking further if the speaker has exhausted their, um, temperate comments, shall we say? So that's essentially leaving the issue unresolved, okay? When I look to the second F, what the second F does is it has the universal time limit language. And so what I thought and, and Carolyn and I talked about is, well, what would be a time limit that most speakers in most public hearings would never hit? That we would never be in a position of having to cut off a speaker, say, in a situation that happened tonight? A speaker wanted to come up and the speaker had a finite number of things to say and the speaker did not take 10 minutes. The speaker took, you know, two, three, four, five minutes, which is usual, and then sat down. And they wouldn't necessarily ever have to be cut off for reasons of, you know, our general rule. But having this time limit allows the chair, if ever necessary, to, without, uh, shall we say, running afoul of that speaker's constitutional rights, to ask the speaker to, to stop speaking after their time is up. And then if the speaker did not stop speaking after that person's time was up, then they could be removed from the hearing. And it would be, my opinion, that, that is the only safe harbor that the court decision gives a chair to stop a speaker from speaking merely because their time limit is up. And any other reason that the chair chooses to use to stop a speaker, you know, maybe it's okay, maybe it's not. Note that the, uh, chair, uh, Mr. Kalenda in the court case was sued in his personal capacity for the actions that he undertook. So that's the reason why F, uh, the second F, has a universal time limit. And so the note underneath it says, well, the, the, the advantage of this is it gives whoever is chair and, uh, the, the safest of safe harbors to stop a disruptive speaker without incurring liability. As I always say, I don't mind getting sued, but I mind getting sued and losing. And so that's what the second fi, uh, F is designed to avoid. The downside, of course, is that somebody really does need to keep time. Whether they, you know, have their phone out and then for every speaker, they press start and then press stop when the speaker stops speaking, you know? I mean, technically, that would need to happen. So really, it's a policy choice, isn't it? Does this board think it's worth it to implement a universal time limit? Or does this board think that's not worth it? And so at this point, I was suggesting, and Carolyn agreed, this might be a decent idea, a time of 10 minutes, long enough that it doesn't impact our standard speaker, but gives the share, the chair in an emergency, the ability to stop someone from, um, you know, um, disruptive speech, uh, to stop them without incurring liability. Anybody have questions about that?
A, a couple of questions. Um, number one was, would that be something that we would have to say before the public hearings?
Yep.
That the maximum on our time you have to speak is 10 minutes?
Mm-hmm. And the board would appreciate it if you have less than 10 minutes worth of stuff to say. Perhaps not to use that whole time, but that's the time you have, yes, indeed. Because if you think about it, if everybody knows this is our practice and they know it every time, then no one can feel singled out, right? That's kind of one of the problems with the first one, which is if you only implement the time limit when certain persons are here or certain topics are discussed, shall we say, then you could be accused of content restriction.
But you all just can't shut, like, look, this woman we had tonight, she thought I closed the public hearing just because she stood up. Did you hear her say that?
Yep.
Did you clue when I get up, you know? And, and so that's, if all of a sudden somebody's up there and I say, hey, time's up, you couldn't do it. Second thing is, is it legal? Is it at all legal to be, to sit here and say, it's a public hearing, you have a max of 10 minutes to speak?
So let me answer that question by saying that's the only legal thing that is a safe harbor in Barron versus Kalenda.
Okay.
So the answer is yes. And the reason that that is the suggestion is because there is no other, there is no other safe harbor that I can find in that opinion for you or anyone else who's sitting in that position to stop a speaker at a public hearing without being concerned about violating their constitutional right.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I like it. 10 minutes is a long time, a real long time. I don't know if we've ever had anybody get up. We've had some people get up more than once and maybe combined it was 10 minutes. But I don't think we've ever had anybody get up here and speak for 10 minutes.
It's, it's a rare event, but as Claudia is pointing out, you know, that, that provision will save us any anguish that may result from somebody.
We don't have to listen to somebody calling us jerks for five minutes rather than, you know, they speak for five. Jim?
Now, can the, the, uh, waiver be granted beyond the 10 minutes by vote of the planning board? So in other words, a, you know, participant from the audience is up there, they've got a decent point of view and they reach a 10-minute limit, you're about ready to cut them off, and can that be granted?
Well, um, I'll let Carolyn take that. Carolyn, you want to take that one?
Because I, I think that's exactly what we're trying to avoid and would be putting that burden on whoever's sitting in that chair to make the decision why Resident A gets more time than Resident B.
And, and the.
I would be concerned with that.
And, I'm sorry.
And rebuttal to that is, if, if there is rebuttal going be back and forth between the board and the person in the audience raising the concerns, which goes on pretty frequently in this, on this panel, um, how do you manage that timeline?
Is a provision in here, if I could, Mr. Chair? There's a provision in here, if someone's going to talk longer than that, you can request that they put it in writing.
Writing and send it to you.
Oh, in other words, I'm up there presenting my case.
If we're asking somebody questions or they're asking and, and the person that's presenting gets up and answers a question, it could go longer than 10 minutes, even though the person hasn't spoken for 10 minutes.
Right.
Because this basically says you, I, I don't know if it does say that. Does it say? You know, will be 10 minutes unless, specifically enough time will be, uh, 10 minutes the chair announces. Yeah, so this is, they have 10 minutes to.
Get their penalty time?
Well, we'd have to shut, so once somebody else is speaking, you'd have to shut the clock off and.
Yeah, would that include our discussion?
And then what? Right. It, it, it really, it, I don't think it technically should include our discussion.
Right.
It means we just don't want them up there longer than, speaking longer than 10 minutes.
Yeah, right, because.
I mean, if our discussion is five minutes and they're standing there.
We could, we could fill them up for nine minutes and 30 seconds, right?
Yes, David?
So the, the public hearing is a finite amount of space or time or a period in our agenda that we set up. We're only talking about the public, but there are people who come in as part of whatever the topic is and make presentations. Are they restricted? Or is there a separate category for the people who are talking during the public hearing that are representing whatever the topic is and the people that are in the audience? Is, is different?
I, I will answer that. Great question. This section 4.5F is under public participation. So one would assume, and we can certainly look at this, that that does not include proponents or applicants who have, of course, the need for a much longer period of time to make their points. But they are also not, I would think, included in public.
The reason I bring it up is I, I, I sit the, I work for the Department of Education and they have a monthly meeting and they have a five-minute thing and they have a bell and they press it. And there's a person who comes and she always laughs and says, I know, I always go over and thank you for allowing me to go over, and they let her go over. And so there's no rule, everybody else sticks to the five minutes, but this one particular person does. So, I mean, I, I've seen it. I'm glad you, you said proponents versus the public because I was, I could just see somebody in the public saying, well, you'll let him talk for 10 minutes, you know? Well, he's the proponent, that's why he gets to talk for 10 minutes. And we do bring people up, like we say, okay, let's bring up the guy from the, uh, Public Works Department or whatever. And, you know, it, it could get complicated, but.
Just so 4.5 says, receiving public testimony during hearings. That's what we're talking about here, public testimony. So we can certainly make sure that procedures for public hearings, um, uh, the procedures for public hearings be, the chair shall ask staff and/or applicant's representatives to summarize the project. So there seems to be a distinction between applicant and their representatives and the public.
Right, but for tonight, we called out the public works person to come in. Right, and I'm just saying there could be si- situations where there's somebody in the audience and whoever the proponent is, and, and the city engineer is here and he comes up, does he get restricted?
No.
Okay. I just want to be sure because I can, I've been doing this a long time and there's always somebody out there that finds that little worm.
Well, the, the, if you're saying somebody is getting up here from the public and speaking and then calling up the city engineer.
No.
To back them up?
No.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that.
What happened tonight?
Like what happened tonight.
Okay, okay, okay.
But I thought that was part of the applicant, well, part of the proponent. At not, not the public.
Presentation, part of the applicant's presentation.
Yeah.
So nice, nice job on that. So now it's up to us, you and I to.
Because, because the other, the other parts of this are more, you know, technical or more, or smaller. But this literally was the thing that drove this whole project. And so in terms of what the planning board members want to do on this, we really need, you know, you guys to tell us.
So we're, two minutes doesn't seem very long and 10 minutes seems terribly, too terribly long. Five minutes is, I think, kind of a normal conversational time when people come in. So would you, would, would we make a decision where we're only going to do this? We're going to say it's five minutes, no matter what the topic is from here on? Or, or do you decide on an ad hoc basis?
Well, the way I'm looking at this is that the 10 minutes and the, the number that, that Claudia and Carolyn put in here is specifically to help us counter somebody that's up there ranting and raving and going on and on. And at the 10 minutes, we shut them off.
What I'm asking, is five minutes a better?
Well, it could be, but I don't think we're ever going to get to that point. Only if we got some, yeah, I, I guess five minutes would be whatever we wanted to shut the guy off. I said a guy, someone, it's a guy, but it, it, shut them off in five minutes.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, 10 minutes is an awful long time.
10 minutes is a real long time to speak, yes.
They call us names.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's, you're right.
I mean, since we can't stop that.
But, but, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Claudia, you, you feel in the research you've done that 10 minutes is sufficient for the safe harbor for us?
So I cannot speak to that because there's really no way to know what would be deemed too long or too short a time by a court, for example, if it ever came to that. The reason I picked 10 minutes is because it should not impact 99% of the speakers that we get. We will not need to cut someone off without reason. Um, and 10 minutes is quite a long time. But, you know, we're all big boys and girls. We can handle 10 minutes of somebody being perhaps less than hospitable towards us. And I figured the 10 minutes just gave every other member of the public an uninterrupted time with us. And that was the reason I chose it. So I can't say I chose it on the basis of making that safe harbor safer because all that is needed is a universal time limit that is not in any way, shape or form related to content.
For instance, people say I tend to talk a lot.
No.
But I don't think I talk for five minutes most of the time. You know, unless I'm really getting into something and reading something. So I, I'm thinking five minutes, if it's sufficient. Uh, most people come up here, they have a question, you know? And it may need, lead to another question once it's answered. But usually people come up and they go down, you know, pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of people uncomfortable there. Presenters of plans, they could be there for a good half hour, you know? And, and lawyers can be up there for a while answering questions. And, but, you know, the, the public usually doesn't go up there and grandstand for, you know, any more than a couple of minutes. And five minutes, if, if that's fine, that's probably more than sufficient time. 10 minutes.
Okay.
It could really get to you.
I, I do not feel strongly about the time, but I just want to, you know, put out there, you know, the, the, the downside is cutting people off and having to timekeep and the upside is as long.
upside is as long as we do it every time, whatever time we pick is safe harbor to me.
And, and we could use as an example in congressional hearings that we watch all the time, I'm sure, it's great entertainment, every, every congressman is limited to five minutes, you know, you know, and they, they might fight over it, you know, want more time, but that's what they live by.
Agreed.
And what's good enough for them should be good enough for others.
See, the other thing on here too is that you, you, what you, what you guys brought up is you, you are giving the chair the, the ability to say five or even two rather than the ten.
But that's really only in a situation where you look out and you see if the number of people wishing to address the board during a public hearing is so great, right? You, because you can't use that at any discretion or else you've blown your safe harbor. Do you see my point?
Okay.
So, so the, the point of this is essentially whatever, i- if the board is interested in putting this time limit in place, it really does have to be done pretty much every time so that no one can accuse us of only making this rule apply when certain people are in the audience or certain topics are discussed, for example. That's kind of the point of it. But the answer to your question is that the chair always has discretion, but the use of that discretion comes with some potential downsides.
Yeah, that was my question, is, is there any issue in the law with subjectivity as far as just the chair determining five or two minutes or how many people, is there any reason that we should make it more objective, like a certain number, or is, you know, just a genuine question, is the subjectivity acceptable?
Well, you know, one really never knows, but it seemed to me, it seems to me, for example, that if the board decides a universal time limit is a good idea and is comfortable with five minutes, then that could just be the time, no matter how many people are in the audience or how few people are in the audience, you know, that's certainly one way of going.
Yeah, my concern with the five or two, you're still putting this discretion in the hands of the chair. So that could be viewed as sort of a plan by plan or applicant by applicant basis and saying, okay, well, they got five minutes for each person in, in the public audience and maybe a month later Bob thinks the project, oh, maybe there's more people here, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, he says, ah, two minutes. So that could open us up to exposure as well. So I think maybe a definitive number, universal across the board for every hearing may be the safest. I mean, that's the goal ultimately. And aside from this SJC case, there wouldn't be a discussion about numbers and minutes because we've never done that, but now with this case, I think we have to do it. But again, what's the objective is to take the discretion out of the hands of the chair. So if we say, okay, you can pick and choose five, ten, seven minutes, I don't know.
But aren't we saying that we would make a determination of what the time is and that's what we're going to do always? That if we decide that it's five minutes, that is what we're going to do forever?
Yes, but that's not necessarily, you know, if, unless they choose, they can reduce the time. Are we going to allow the chair, depending on the public hearing that night and the numbers in the room, whether there's discretion to reduce that number from ten to-
See, I think that's where we'd get in trouble. I think that if we said five minutes, whether there's five hundred people in the room or-
So why don't we just change that ten minutes to five minutes?
Mm-hmm.
And take out the, the line there, chair may reduce the time limit to five minutes, two minutes.
Sure. So we put the period after, after five minutes.
Always five minutes.
And then we'll take out unless the chair announces a different time prior to the start of the public hearing, the chair may reduce the time limit to five minutes or two minutes, blah, 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 and that's all out. So it now reads during all public hearings, the chair will limit each speaker to a specified amount of time, which will be five minutes, period. The board will allow each interested person to speak, period. When speakers cannot make all of their comments within the allotted time, the board will provide the address and timeframe, final date and time for submission of further written testimony. Written testimony should be sent to the Woburn Planning Board and Common Street, Woburn, Mass., oh one eight oh one, or by email to jcastle@cityofwoburn.com. The name of the project on which the comments are being made shall be inserted into the subject line of an email, period. Are people okay with that?
Yeah.
Not perfect.
And now the question is practically speaking, who is going to time keep?
Does anybody have a five minute sand thing that I can turn over this way and turn over that way?
A sand thing?
Yeah.
Come on, you can do it. What is that called?
I, I forget what it's called. What is it? An hourglass.
An hourglass. A five minute glass.
Do they make five minute ones? They probably do.
Well, five minute ones-
They make three minute ones for eggs.
And then I could take it and put it up top here.
Okay.
I give five minutes and put it right there.
The egg timer.
Fine.
But we would have to have, wouldn't we have to have the ability to pause it though technically?
I'm sorry, Rob, what?
Wouldn't we have to have the ability to pause it technically if, if we are, if-
No, the next person would have to wait until I, you know, and then I turn it back over. And then in four minutes, we'd be looking out the person sweating and everything and they're trying to get all their stuff in.
Let's get a big one so everybody can see it in the audience.
Yeah, just put it on the projector.
Well, like I said, what the, what the Department of Education, they have a ding, a little bell, they have, I think there's a ten second warning thing and then there's a, you know.
They literally have, I mean, like, what is their thing? It's, it's a clock with a bell on it?
There's somebody on the desk, you know, they have a board that sits there and they control it and they have a-
Get a boxing ding.
Well, since she's not here, why don't we just say it's Karen's job?
Well, we can say it's the secretary of the planning board's job, right?
Yes. We get that on, I like the one with the bell.
But you know, let's go back in the Wayback Machine, we haven't had a lot of times when we really had a problem. I mean, there was, when that, you remember that parking lot that Winchester Hospital was trying to put in? That was probably the worst.
That was one of the bad ones.
You know, and there were people yelling at us and calling us names and-
You were on the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was bad.
So we were probably hit at eleven thirty then?
No, but it went on and on and on and on.
Yeah, and we've had several where people, somebody's come up more than once.
Right.
Like they come up and then they say something and then they go back and then they remember what they were going to say again and they come back up and stuff. So, so we kind of have to watch that too, you know?
Well, I don't know how you control that.
You've got two minutes left, you've used three, so you've got two, two, two left.
Which usually what happens when that is that somebody hears something that somebody else said and they go, ooh, and they run up and they say one thing for thirty seconds and then they go back.
Yeah, theoretically.
You know, I don't, I don't know if you could stop a person coming up a second time.
Well, I, I, I know that we, I don't know if we've ever said, I've heard people say it, maybe the council, but you, you know, you try to ask them unless they've got something new to add to the conversation, we'd appreciate it if you didn't say anything else. Because, you know, we'll have somebody come up and talk about water and then the next person comes up and talks about water, and then the next person comes up and talks about water and, and, you know, it, after the, we take them all seriously and we know after the first one, there's a water problem. Ten people doesn't make it a worse water problem.
But it does allow for people's right to express themselves under the state constitution.
That's why you can't say that.
Right.
You know, that's why you really can't say anything.
Hundred percent correct.
And they do have every right to come up.
Exactly, and we appreciate public participation.
Absolutely.
Yes, we do.
Encourage it.
And we learn from it.
Okay, any more discussion on this particular subject? Okay.
All right, Bob, it's up to you and I.
Put that in and then you and I will get together.
Indeed.
I'm retired, so I've got time. It's going to be on your schedule, no, it's going, seriously, it's going to be on your schedule.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tenor tip, you want me to put it on for the next meeting agenda?
When is the next meeting?
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
Um, sure, why don't you put it on and then we'll, we'll see how we vote.
I'm good with it and then we'll exchange phone numbers so that we can actually talk to each other. Okay, up next is the approval of minutes, which I, do we even have them?
Yeah, October twenty second.
Yeah, I, I don't think we got it.
No.
You didn't?
No.
No? Okay. So we'll put that off?
Yeah, well, it, I would say we should wait till we actually physically see them.
Yeah.
At some point, because they weren't emailed to us around the year, so, that I'm aware of. Okay, playboard director, updates?
Uh, updates, I could go on and on, but-
I know.
But I'll be limited to five minutes, that discussion.
Two, two minutes.
Yeah, we're going to add that to the thing, the public and the planning board director.
So our next meeting is January fourteenth. I want everybody to enjoy their holidays and we'll be back at work January fourteenth. In the meantime, Casey and I have a redevelopment authority meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. If anybody here would like to attend that meeting, it will be at the engineering office, I mean, conference room.
At two P M.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of projects that are under construction right now. If the board is interested in the hearing, I could give you a presentation real quick on what's going on with the Vale or North Woburn, any of that, or if you want to save that for a more formal presentation at our January, pretty much kicking off the new year, that's fine with me too.
To the board, do you want to hear it now or have them do a more formal presentation in January?
Why are you looking at me?
I'm just looking at this line, I'm looking at the right side, now I'm looking at the left side.
Yeah. You know, just quickly, you know, the residential aspect of the Vale, that's continuing slowly but surely. The commercial portion of that is pretty much at a standstill as with a lot of commercial developments in this neck of the woods, this region. You know, biotech, they're not building any buildings right now, there are very few office buildings being sketched out and planned for relative to the permitting process. There is an uptick right now in office space all of a sudden, so there's promise of, you know, some progress towards building permits in this region for office buildings. One of the things that's really hot nationwide is the data centers for A I. Casey and I were talking about this earlier this week. The unfortunate thing for New England, our power supply is more costly to produce than other parts of the country and, as everyone knows, there's a lot of energy involved with data centers and that costs a lot of money and we're not, one of those regions is really beneficial to that particular industry that is booming in parts of the country that have lesser costs for energy production. But, you know, we're trying to look at as a city where we can gain the next niche of the market, you know, what's going to be attractive for commercial development in this area. And, you know, just, that's our job is to try to see what's out there and, and see if we're able to acquire their interests in, in looking at the city of Woburn. There is a pedestrian crossing at Anderson Station that's pretty well underway planning wise, but this is the pedestrian crossing that would reach over to the other side of New Boston Street. You know, projects like that cost a lot of money these days and, you know, it takes time to, to plan for, get on the tip, you know, and everything come together. There's also been talk, if you've been following city council meetings, of the MBTA Anderson Station site may possibly become a development site as a, as an alternate to what's already an alternate cover over the materials associated with the Anderson Station. So that might become a development site that twenty years ago would never be envisioned, but that may come to be too. There is a lot of progress, construction progress going on with the Mishwom, not the Mishwom, but the New Boston Street Bridge. If you've gone up that way recently, the abutments are in place, the construction is moving forward. The city's doing everything it can to work in sequence with the multifamily development at the former New England residence property to make sure that stays on track. They want to open up, the bridge isn't going to be built or completed in time for the opening of that development, but, you know, everybody's working together to try to make sure that, that stays on track, they get their occupancy, you know, as soon as their project's available. But there's, there's a lot of talk of a lot of projects, but, you know, the economy has to cooperate, you know, and everybody keeps on putting up warning flags that, you know, development may not occur in the sequence that, you know, people would like. You know, there's a lot of projects that are being on, put on hold, progress of projects. Suffolk Downs is one of them, the Wonderland Site and Revere, you know, those are projects are being delayed. Big plans, but, you know, again, projects don't happen unless the economy cooperates. Pretty much what's going on, again, I could go on and on, I'd, I'd like to do a more formal presentation in case I, for our next planning board meeting, time permitting.
Okay, all right, put it on there.
John, I just have a question, on the New Boston Street Bridge, I know we've talked about traffic. Traffic's been part of my work life and I, I just have this terrible feeling that people are going to come down ninety-three and they're going to say, I don't have to deal with the cloverleaf, I can just get off here and go over there and start driving through North Woburn and, and I hope, I mean, cars you can't do anything about, but trucks, I hope there is some real control over the trucks because I can see a lot of trucks getting off. Why, why would you bother with the cloverleaf if you can get yourself off on Commerce Way and go over the, the new bridge and then come into North Woburn and go down Merimack Street or wherever? So I hope that's something they're really giving a lot of thought to because, I mean, I live on, where I live on Ward Street, I see this traffic all of a sudden show up a couple of times a day and I expect it and it's all cutting through wherever going up into Burlington and I can just see that by a factor of five and, and just killing the neighborhood. So I hope they're, and, and I know, Jim, you, we've talked about this before, but it's just something that as we get closer and closer to this bridge, you know, the unintended consequences of all that traffic saying, hey, I can just avoid the cloverleaf and figure out another way to get to where I want to go.
You know, it's still going to, going to be very circuitous, you know, you get off at that Commerce Way exit ramp and then you're going to have to go north on Presidential, then you're taking a left on New Boston Street to utilize the new bridge. You know, a lot of people do get off of ninety-three southbound, and I'm one of them, utilizing Commerce Way exit and then traveling down to Commerce Way and jumping back on one twenty-eight. I mean, I think a lot of people do that years ago when Commerce Way wasn't two lanes, it was only one lane in each direction. I mean, the backup would make that an insane movement, but people have a lot of good luck getting off of that Commerce Way ninety-three southbound in order to avoid the cloverleaf. So that lessens the traffic on the cloverleaf, actually, you know, because you have two routes of travel instead of being restricted to one. So you get down to the cloverleaf and it's not as congested because so many people are making that move of getting off at Commerce Way. But when you're talking about truck traffic, you know, getting off at that exit and then having to go north on Presidential and then taking a left, it's all, it's tight when you go on Presidential to New Boston Street, that's a tight turn. I, it's not well suited for trucks, not that there won't be plenty of them, there will be, but, you know, we will be working on looking at that and, and say, come up with alternatives. So, you know, the residential neighborhoods of North Woburn are going, are not going to be in- So, you know, the residential neighborhoods of North Woburn are going, are not going to be inundated with truck traffic. And if it becomes a problem, we'll have to, you know, definitely put more emphasis on it and deal with it. But, uh, one thing I wanna bring up to Commerce Way, Presidential Way, and the slip ramps onto Ninety, Ninety-five, I, Ninety-three and, um, Atlantic Ave, um, that's getting a lot of serious attention right now, if you're not aware of it, because, um, there's so many accidents up there. The Woburn Police Department with Sergeant Stokes in particular, um, you know, taking a great interest in trying to make that intersection safer. So mass DOT, um, through the MPO process, um, they're, they're looking at it. Casey and I were up there with, um, the city engineer Jay Corey and, uh, state officials. And, um, they are trying to move as quickly as they can to make that intersection safer and hopefully much safer because there are a lot of bad broadside accidents that have taken place over the last ten years.
Which, which intersection are you talking about, John? Kind of off of Ninety-three?
Yeah, the, the Ninety-three on-off ramps.
At, at that light right there?
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of, um, broadside accidents. Casey, I don't know if you wanna chime in on this effort, but, um, you know, the state and the Woburn Police Department in particular are working as closely together and as quickly as they can to make modifications in that intersection so that it is safer for vehi, for vehicular travel. They're also, as part of that, um, they're going to design it, and it's gonna take more time to do this, but, um, they're trying to bring that into compliance, uh, with a complete streets intersection design so that, you know, pedestrians have a chance of crossing the roadway possibly without getting killed. Bicycleists being able to safely utilize the right-of-ways over there that are critically tied into that intersection. And, you know, this fifty mile an hour traffic coming off of Ninety-three Southbound, you know, entering that intersection. And what's happening is people are making movements because the light configurations and the lane configurations are not designed properly. So there's a lot of crisscrossing of traffic and blindsided, um, accidents going on, they're severe ones. So, um, that's an important intersection, well, obviously, because of the, of the volume and the speed associated with it and the many movements that are associated with it. So, um, it worked when it was first designed, when there really wasn't as much volume of traffic. But right now, uh, the volumes of traffic associated with that intersection is just increasing exponentially. And, you know, we have to address the inadequacies of that design that's contributing to some really bad accidents and a lot of them, so that?
You know, guessing that, I mean, when that was originally put in, you know, it, it wasn't the cloverleaf, it's always been bad, but it wasn't as bad.
Right.
So now you've got a lot of people getting off of Ninety-three South, going that way. I know when I go from my house and I get to get on Ninety-three North, I go over eastbound Commerce Way and get on that way. I don't wanna go on one-twenty-eight and go up.
Right.
That way, it's, it's ridiculous. Still takes me twenty minutes to go from, from Woburn, to get out of Woburn, it takes me twenty minutes.
It's, when I travel up to the, to Seabrook, I, I use Route sixty-two and meander my way up instead of getting on one-twenty-eight. Ninety-five's fine, but one-twenty-eight, forget about it.
And you, and you talk about cars taking, like, I live on Valley Road. When this, when one-twenty-eight is all backed up, and John sees it, 'cause he lives right close up there, when, when one-twenty-eight's all backed up, I can't get out of the street. I cannot get out of the street. I sit there, now, it's a good example of the five minutes, I feel like I'm there for five minutes. It's probably thirty seconds, you know? But you just can't get out of the street.
No.
I mean, the roads are re, as it stands right now, and we'll get on here, but this, this is never gonna change because there's too many cars on the road today. The, the, the streets in New England were not made for this many cars. You know, they get eight-lane highways in California and Texas and things like that. We got two-lane highways.
The cloverleaf was designed for one-third of the current volume?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. I mean, it's just, but just to, like, you, you know, you get up on a Saturday morning, it's a nice day, you say, hey, let's take a ride up to New Hampshire. It's ten o'clock in the morning, one-twenty-eight's all backed up. It's like, are you kidding?
You gotta get up early and get out.
Well, real early, yeah.
That's, in California, people plan, you know, their whole day to try to avoid, so you get up at two o'clock in the morning if you're gonna go anywhere, you know? And, and here, you don't have to get up at two, but, you know, if you get on the road six or seven, you can get somewhere without wasting your whole day in traffic.
Six, not seven.
Yeah. No, seven's not good anymore.
Seven's not good.
So do we have any other business?
Um, that would be it.
Okay, so we'll see?
I use my five minutes, and I don't wanna hold and do it.
All our business here, I'll entertain a motion?
Certainly, I would make a motion to adjourn at eight-fifty-seven.
Motion by Claudia to adjourn at eight-fifty-seven, seconded by somebody on the left, good. Carolyn, excellent. All those in favor? Nine, seven, four, none against, and one hesitant.